Call the regular council meeting to order at City Hall February 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Are there any additions to the agenda this evening?
I would request a five-minute executive session for potential hiring.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
A second.
Motion and a second. On the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four one. Any citizens' comments this evening? I have to ask. All right, moving on. I'm considering the agenda. Group limits of regular council meeting February 5th, 2019. Also appropriation ordinance two dash nineteen dash nineteen, the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred sixty-one cents. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second.
He's here.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Department of the Committee reports Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell not here.
What about this man, somebody cut his report down?
Anything for Lisa.
This is my wife, nineteen oh one.
Moving on. Police Chief Jim?
Just give you guys a quick update. Our new officer, Octavia Bonzalas, has been with us for approximately a week now. Catching on very, very quickly. He was a major asset to our agency already. On a case we had at Short Stop last Wednesday, he was able to interpret when we had a major language barrier. So made things go very quickly and proficiently out there, so that was much appreciated. Currently, I've got Bill attending a two-day supervisor class. He started it today. And he'll finish it up tomorrow at KLETC. The patrol truck, should things go well, should have the cage and the gun racks installed on it. Hopefully this weekend. That's what it's initially scheduled for anyway. Probably be picked up Thursday night. Hopefully have it back either Saturday or Sunday if things continue to go the way they are. So I haven't had or heard an update other than that, so... And I think that's all I got for you right now.
Thanks Jim. Anything for Jim this time?
Can you explain the telephone that you purchased?
Those were two of the cell phones that were outdated. They were out of warranty. They were ready for an upgrade. We were having some issues. We use our cell phones quite a bit for documentation as far as picture-taking. The qualities of pictures, they're not very good. I spoke to the NexTech people out there. The way the phones had been being purchased was we were paying a set price and plus a monthly service charge. They recommended just buying the two phones outright. It would be cheaper, it would not change our phone. And that would keep us with a two-year warranty with the phones. So they were, I believe, two hundred ninety or three hundred dollars apiece. And we just went with the two that were available for an upgrade. It didn't cost us anything extra. If you upgrade early, you're going to pay quite a bit, so we did not want to do that. So those were the two phones that were ready, so that's why we did that.
Okay, anything else for Jim? Thank you Jim. Moving on. Fire Chief Michael?
Another thing I got, the training facility, the county's wanting to have some sort of agreement so that everybody knows that it's their equipment that's going to be sitting on the property. So as soon as they get that drawn up, we'll... Should be good to go with that. So that's all I have.
As far as getting it set up, did you talk to anybody who's going to put it all, stack them on, move them first?
We haven't got that.
Can our digger trucks do that, Jeff?
Probably. I don't know what they weigh, but I'm sure we can.
Yeah, I'm not...
It'd have to reach.
I don't know.
I'd hate to pay anybody to do that without the loader.
I don't know how you hook them, so I don't know, but I'm sure we can. We'll figure out something.
Well, we thought maybe even if the county had forks.
They've got a long set of forks. We have a set of extensions for our loader. We really don't have a set of forks per se.
Yeah, I don't know if they can be picked up that way, or... I mean, I'm not exactly sure. So I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But yeah, if the city and county can do it and not be any expense, that would be the way to go. So I think the only... The biggest part is having a trailer and hauling one down and hopefully having somebody down there that we can unload one while another is loading up down there. That way we don't have to run back and forth, back and forth. But so we can figure that out when we get to that point.
How wide are they? Can you tell me that?
Are they?
Semi.
Costco trailers? Is that like?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Whatever the trailer width is.
We've picked up our digger truck before, but yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how you hook on to them, but I'm sure we'll figure out a way, so...
Yeah.
They have on the corners, they have where you can put a chain around it?
They do?
Yeah.
Yeah, we pick it up then. No big deal. Sure.
Anything else for Chief? Okay, moving on. City clerk, if you guys have anything you'd like to talk to Jamie about, of course you can do that. On the office hours, she was just wanting to let you guys know that she's going to start posting a lunch hour where the office is closed, just because of the fact that we are down to two. And it will be easier just to go get lunch taken care of, come back. There's consistency for people. Instead of one day we have a note on the door that says we're closed for lunch, another day we don't. People coming down and getting that inconvenience. It's just easier to let them go, get their thing done, and come back. So just wanted to let you know that was going on, so when you start seeing that... But she said what time she's... She hasn't told me what time she... But I had told her, I said, you know, if you could shift it around the lunch hour, where it would be like an eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, or twelve-thirty to one-thirty. That way people could come in over their lunch for a little bit, or use the drop box, or whatever. So that way you guys know what's going on when you see that. It's just more consistency. So you know, you go, "Oh, I went up to that dang city office and it was closed today for lunch." And it's just more consistent. People know what's going on. And you don't have one person in here by themselves trying to do everything and getting bombarded. It'd be much easier for them. Okay, moving on. City Superintendent Jeff?
I guess I probably should explain part of that Fairbanks bill. Of all the weeks that the weather could have got mean on us when we were requesting parts out of Houston, the fog had to come in and sit down. They couldn't land a plane in Wichita to get our parts off. We red-eyed the parts. The mechanic traveled on Monday. He was here on Tuesday. We tore it apart. We got done by about two o'clock in the afternoon. We realized we didn't have the right parts. We called Houston, had the parts red-eyed out. Wednesday morning, the fog was on the ground. UPS couldn't land in Wichita. They didn't get in until late in the day. We didn't get the parts till Thursday morning. So by the time we got it done, we warmed the engine up, and he left on Friday. We had five days. I figured about three. We couldn't beat the weather. Anyway, just if we could have changed it in any way, if we had... If we'd had any idea it was a marine engine on the inside, we'd have known from the start what parts, but it came out of the saltwater in Louisiana when we bought it years ago. And I don't guess anybody logged that in their paperwork when they put it in, because Fairbanks helped put it in. But anyway, we had stationary engine parts and we needed marine parts. And so by the time we got them, it was Thursday morning. We got them together. The engine was cold. We warmed it up all night, started it Friday morning, loaded it up, sent him home. So I apologize, but I don't know what else I can do. Just the fact of can't beat mother nature, I guess.
That if people would have lost their power, they'd have been pretty upset, so it's good that it's back up and going.
Yeah, you know, we rely on it when we in the wintertime, because some of you know and some of you don't. We don't start that cooper in the wintertime, because the return water's all outside. We can't leave it in there, you know? So we rely on that OP in the wintertime, and when it's down and as cold as it's been, the load's heavy enough that the caterpillar won't hold it. So it's just kind of one of those things. Anyway, that's all I got for now until we get to old business.
We need to approve that.
It's already been. It was in the appropriation, wasn't it?
So I have some stuff on the dumpster, but I'll wait.
Some of those things you just can't prevent.
Yeah, I mean, if this was a bad deal of all weeks, we had three days that fog was on the ground. I mean...
There's basically nobody even closer that can do that.
See, that's the thing. I called all three guys that I knew, and I waited till last to call Fairbanks, because they're always the highest. But you know, I explained to you that that mechanic that we normally use was in the hospital. I called the guys that did our exhaust out in Nebraska. They're on an engine in Illinois, going to be there for another ninety days. So they're the only two guys I know that do it, you know? So...
Part of it sometimes.
It's done, it's up, it's running, it's in good shape, so anyway.
I hope he had some good meals.
Yeah, well, I hope he slept good. He said they always stay in the Holiday Inn. I took him out for lunch one day to kind of cut it back a little, but I don't think I helped him. I tried, but I don't think it worked, so...
Three hundred and sixty for five days.
He probably ate again after lunch.
I would make a motion to approve the thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents to Fairbanks for the repair of the generator.
Have a motion. Second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries five oh. City Attorney John Beverley.
I don't know if you guys got it or not, because I wasn't aware that Jamie was sick. But Sunday, Saturday, I sent her an email, passed it along regarding the tuition reimbursement that the council asked me. Mayor, listen, were you there at the last meeting? You were not there. Tuition reimbursement related to the benefits and salary paid to the law enforcement officer when they're in training, and whether that can be recouped if they leave within a certain period of time after that training. There is a statute, state statute, that deals with it. I'm looking like you guys did not receive my memo.
No.
Okay.
But I did find out on my own that there is a state statute about it.
Okay, well, Jim did find me the Fredonia agreement, so I will ask Jamie to send you that memo. And if you have any questions, then we can talk about that at council meeting, or you can email a response or something.
Anything for John? No report from me, except for I do appreciate Mark taking care of the meeting last time for me. I was out and about. Much-needed time away. Much-needed time away, so thank you very much, Mark. Okay, moving on. Old business. Trash dumpster?
You'd asked me to get some prices on some chain length around the dumpster. We called Wally Eldridge, and he basically told us that eighty by eighty would be about fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. If we wanted to take twenty foot off of it, you could knock about two thousand off of it. Now, we did... David did price some panels like was up around the grocery store during building erection out there. And we could get enough panels to go around it, posts, cement and all. Or maybe even not the cement for six thousand or less for movable-type panels. So if we did, you know, want to change the way that we let them in or out, we could just chain two panels together. That'd be you guys' choice, but that would make it a little more versatile to be able to fit around the dumpsters. You know, we can move the dumpsters to a point after he drops them, but we have to just kind of shove them and drag them, because they're strictly forward and back. So you know, if you want... If that was an option that you wanted to look at, why, that's about why we come up there. The other thing was with the cameras, we really didn't find anything that would capture on movement, except for maybe just a good high-quality game camera or something. You know, if we did have trash in there that didn't belong, we just didn't really see anything that really fit the needs of, I think, what we're really looking for, so...
Jeff, like, you said city stafford has it like in their yard. What's the problem with us putting it by the fire station? Because if we know, if we have guys there or traffic...
Nothing, except we park there, you know, but we'd have to have... We'd have to leave room so they could get up there. Now, theirs parks... Theirs, if you've been by there, it's north of the power plant. Inside, of course, all their yard is fenced in. But no, I don't have a problem doing it that way. I mean, that's...
I mean, if you think we can make it work, I mean, whether it's on this side or...
The problem would be it'd be trying to get them dropped and picked up, I think, without busting the curb, trying to take them on and off. That'd be my only worry. You know, as in that, no, I don't have a problem with it at all. I mean, usually we could keep an eye on it down there, but it's the weekends that's the problem. I mean, people will bring stuff in there like you cannot imagine, but I don't know.
That's a thing down there. There's like no eyes down there at all.
Just the cameras, the only thing we've got. And I mean, we do check it. But usually by the time that somebody hauls in a truckload, if there's ten bags of trash under there, you ain't going to get them. But I mean, I don't know that we can watch it any better up here, but maybe out in the open, in the line of sight, people would have a little more of a guilty conscience about what they throw in? I don't know. I don't know.
If it's there, it's not out in the township route?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that'd be my only worry is the way that that guy loads those. You know, I'd be if he dropped it off the edge of the curb, we might bust a curb there. Because it'll take up pretty much where the guys park, if that's what you did with it, so...
It'd be up to you to figure out wherever you think it could sit.
I'd still... I think I'd still rather like it down there. I mean, I think it's easier to handle and stuff down there. And it's kind of protected by the wind this time of year from the building. And when we do, we can at least get the trash picked up. We keep a tarp in the dog pen down there so we can tarp it down. So I mean, if we wanted to isolate it any more than that, why, that's your call. You know, whether you want to fence it and lock it up, or you know, what you want to do.
Is that eighty by eighty with gates, big gates for them all in?
Yes, with two gates on each end, yeah. Fourteen thousand three ninety-nine is what it was.
Is there any way you think you and the guys could do that, that fence?
We probably could. I don't know. I don't know a lot about stretching chain, but we can. I mean, this was just a six-foot fence.
Oh, six...
I think I'd almost rather use the panels if we were going to do that. At least they'd be more flexible. You know, I know when we were working out at the grocery store, we could pull one of their posts and get in there where we needed to, or pick them up and swing them around. We could also maybe utilize the garage in that old wellhouse, some of that, you know? At least during this time of year. Now, in the summer, if we have to generate, it wouldn't be a very good place for it, but I don't know. We could get a whole lot more out of a hundred and fifty or sixty foot of those panels by utilizing part of the building, I think. And being able to lock, you know, that's your call, whether you want us to lock it up on the weekends. You know, or have my guys on call, lock it and unlock it. I mean, they're by there every day. So... But I just think versatility-wise, we'd be better off with the panels, I think.
Did you get... I wasn't listening. Did you get us a price for those panels or no?
David looked them up, and we looked them up through Orslins. Orslins has them. And they're basically like a big, heavy-duty dog pen panel, I think's what they are. But we might go to a rental place in Wichita or somewhere where they rent that fence and see if we can buy them that way. That's one thing we haven't done. I think it's a little better quality fence, probably, so...
I think if you make it inaccessible, the trash will just be outside the fence.
I'm afraid you're right.
That's human nature.
Yeah, I mean, when we cover it up, people dump it beside there.
If it's inaccessible, it's either dumped out in the county road ditches, like tires.
Someday, yeah, you're right. You're exactly right. I won't argue with that.
If you fence it up, it's going to be dumped outside your fence.
At least here, we have a camera. We could kind of halfway catch it.
Kind of know that they're doing it.
I mean, maybe put a little better quality camera out there than what we've got, but at least we can see. I mean, we can usually pick out who it is, so...
Something doing at Goodwill. Goodwill's not open. They just throw the stuff out the front door.
Oh, you can't imagine the stuff we get in there. I mean, you just can't. Everything from feed sacks to trash sacks to...
I mean, wouldn't you guys agree that that problem would help the problem to have it down here?
Yeah, I just don't want to really look at it.
If the trash would be going in my yard, then...
Yeah.
Well, that's your problem.
That's the thing, you know, at least down there, we can kind of control it. I mean, not great, but if we keep an eye on it, we usually try and get a tarp before the fact, because they won't take it once it's overfull, see? We'll mash it a couple of times, then we usually tarp it. But sometimes after we call Pam, it might be three or four or five days before they come get it, too. It's just the luck of the draw, so...
Well, I think that the pro on moving it over here would be most people wouldn't want to throw something in there with fear of being caught.
I don't know whether it's a case or not.
I don't know whether it would be, you know, but...
On Friday, maybe. On Sunday, no, probably not.
Yeah, but there's still people walking around here, so people see stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm with Ryan on this. I'd rather not see it over here, but I don't have a problem with it.
We mash it with the batco, and it takes quite a bit of room.
Right.
We swing out to the south of it, usually take the hoe and mash it down, so it takes forty feet on top of, you know...
So what if we put it down here, but also have a picket fence or vinyl fence around it?
The trash is going to be outside the fence.
I think we still run it.
Down here, there's a lot less wind because of the church and the fire station, though. I mean...
Hell, I don't know whether it is or not. I'd argue that point, I think. That building down there is pretty long, and we protect a good share of it. Most of the time, it's in the middle of the building, you know? And at least if it goes, it goes south where we can see it, nobody else does, and we get it picked up, so...
Well, we got to do something.
I'll do whatever you ask.
I agree. I just like to...
It's more like being quiet and hug a while.
It's an awful lot of money to spend on...
You can have old guys with a stick out there for fourteen thousand.
Yeah, I mean, we take pretty good care of it most of the time.
I don't see that. I don't see it's a problem.
Some... Couple of times we've had to pick up trash, but most of the time we catch it early enough that it's, you know... And like I say, we do keep a tarp in the end of the dog pen, but we can tarp it down, so...
I'd say look at trying to find a camera of some sort if you're going to keep the dumpster out there.
Let me see if I can get a little better grade of camera.
It's just going to end up outside the fence, and then take it the crap out of them, catch them.
I'll do some looking.
Not to chime in, but we just bought a new security system called Arlo. It's wireless. You buy it by the number of cameras you want to buy. Runs off of a unit, but it only turns on when it senses motion. It's completely waterproof. It might be something to look at.
We pick up some vehicles and everything moving there. I mean, you know, I don't know.
Where do you check for cameras at?
We got... Well, I looked several different places on websites, but our original camera system came through Randy Clark. And so we've got cameras out to dump, and we've got cameras down there and several other places. But you know, in order to be basically compatible with what we got, there's only a certain amount of things that we can... That we can't put on without going to the expense of opening up and buying something basically just for that one spot, you know? I mean, it's not hard to run back through there and see in a twenty-four-hour day. If we catch something in there, usually from the time we quit till the next morning, we'll find out who it is, you know? The weekends are the big deal. I mean, that's when you get dumped on and you have no idea, but... But all in all, you know, we keep a pretty good eye on it most of the time. It's the loose stuff on top that gets away. That shouldn't be in there anyway, so...
Council thoughts?
Might check the Golden Oak telephone, too. I don't know if it's anything compatible with what you guys have down there.
Yeah, I don't know.
They sell them to you.
When you're saying compatible, you're saying to hook it to our system without knocking them out?
With the system we have, because it's on my phone, it's on the other guy's phone, because we watch the panel board and stuff. And inside the plant and around the plant. So switch gear and the primary stuff out in the sub, and that stuff, we keep an eye on it. So yeah, I'll do some checking, see what I can find out. Sure, I'd be glad to.
The council adopted the dumpster fee ordinance last time, but the council hasn't really instructed me to do a resolution to establish that fee, that fee amount. The ordinance allows you to adopt a resolution setting that fee when you want to. Purpose being so that anytime you want to stop it or increase it, you don't have to pass a new ordinance.
Right.
Is that something the council wants to do?
Thoughts?
For a dollar, for two dollars, I'd...
Oh, fee for... Yeah. But a dollar probably wouldn't still cover what we pay to have it dumped everywhere.
How many bills would it be on?
Oh, it's depending on how much trash you get. Like last time, we...
How many bills do we send out?
Eight hundred or something.
How many bills? About eight hundred?
Okay, so eight hundred bucks a month. And depending on how many times it's dumped, it's an...
I think the average is around between eight to like thousand dollars monthly.
So you wouldn't recoup all of it, but you would recoup a good portion?
Two dollars on the statement, you covered the cost?
I wouldn't go that far.
Neither would I, but we got pushback from the dollar.
I don't have a problem with the dollar.
Neither do I, but I've heard several people telling me, "Don't care if it's two dollars either."
I'm going to pay thirty-six dollars a year and not ever use it, so...
I've heard a lot of people using it.
Which I'm fine with.
It just comes back to if you want to look at your neighbor's trash in the yard, or if you want it to be in the dumpster.
Yeah, I agree.
I... Sorry.
I guess we can always revisit it, you know? If it starts getting dumped more than what it is right now, then we can raise it. Like John said, we can always raise it if that's in our resolution.
But even then, we're still, right now, we're still depleting that fund that it's being pulled out of.
But you're not depleting it near as quick.
Right.
And sometime, we, you know, we don't dump like four times a month either. Like you're making your money back. Sometimes we only have to dump twice, you know, but still...
So what do we need to do, John?
Just direct me to draft it somehow?
Draft it for a dollar. Draft it somehow, John.
I'd do a dollar.
Dollar, yeah. Draft it for a dollar.
For a dollar?
Does the council want to go ahead and get a dumpster back and then go ahead and do this camera deal in the process? Or what do you want me to do here?
We need to do something. I'd hate to get more calls in the next two weeks.
I know there's been a lot of people come by there and see that it's not there and went on, you know?
So I mean, you're saying like if you checked into cameras, like...
I'd go ahead and get it.
I can do that.
I'd go ahead and get a dumpster back and see if we can't try to monitor it and keep looking at camera stuff.
I'll try and get you some camera stuff.
I'm not really looking forward to spending fourteen thousand or even six thousand dollars for a fence.
No.
Because I think you're right. People will show up down there, and if they can't get in, it's just going to be piled by there, and you're going to pick it up anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
But I think maybe some better signs and John, if you...
Could we put a fine on there for dumping in it? Could we do that? Would that help?
You've got a standard fence, all right.
I mean, we, you know, we've basically put in English and Spanish both what we don't want in there. But you know, there's no...
Maybe bigger signs.
There's no fine, so...
Bigger signs with a fine on it and...
You're being watched.
Big red letters.
This area's under surveillance signs, maybe.
I'm watching you.
But I'd get those signs up on some posts, you know, instead of on the ground with the barrels and make it.
Okay.
Jim's address in case they witness illegal dumping.
That'd be fun.
You want to put a fine price on there?
Don't you usually be set up to a thousand dollars, didn't you, John?
I mean, that's the way the one at the tree side is. It's up to a thousand dollars, I think. Only difference between that dumpster and that tree side is if the state lady catches it at the tree side, she'll lock the gate.
Up to a thousand dollars.
Okay.
In imprisonment, up to a hundred seventy-nine days.
Man, I can't get a sign that big. I mean, I can, but...
Yeah, okay.
All right, we'll take care of it.
Okay, moving on to new business. There is no new business. We're not visiting that item until Jamie comes back. Also into executive sessions, we're not discussing Jamie's executive session until she gets back. But we do have a five-minute executive session to discuss a potential hire for the police department. That would include the chief, council attorney, Pam. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second for Ryan Sanders to reconvene at seven thirty-one, or excuse me, seven thirty-four?
So that's a quick five minutes.
That's a very quick five minutes. All in favor? All opposed? Carries five oh. Call the meeting back to order at seven thirty-four. Any action?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Anthony Bolger for police department at fourteen dollars an hour.
Put motion on the table. Go ahead, second. Motion, die, for a life of a second. No action being taken at this time.
You know, we've sat here at this council table several times discussing this. We've had the community come in here and tell us what they want, to have a fully-staffed police department, and why council is determined to not listen to the people who put us in these positions is beyond me.
There was also a study done as well that recommended, am I correct in that?
You know, there has never been a study.
Yes, there was a study that was done several years ago, Jim, and it stated that it was four officers were needed in this department.
No, 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 it was a study done, they hired a consultant to complete this study, is that correct?
Yes.
We can get a copy of that for everybody.
Yes.
I'm not necessarily opposed to hiring people.
Police department study.
I don't even know where he's gonna move here, you know, I don't, I think personally, we can get by with three officers.
That's so true.
You know, I, I mean, I don't think two officers, but I think three officers.
I know, but also...
Maybe we don't need twenty-four-hour coverage.
Well, that's a decision you need to make, is do you want twenty-four-hour coverage as far as on the street? You're gonna have twenty-four-hour coverage.
We're gonna have twenty-four-hour coverage.
Do you want it on the street, or do you want it on-call coverage? Because you're gonna have it regardless, it's just do you want it as on-call coverage?
No.
You know, that's what you need to decide until your chief. I hired our chief with the understanding that this council had a four-person police department that included the chief with the possibility of a part-timer. That was in his interview, because that was what, one of the first things that was stated when I stepped on. So that's what I had went to this gentleman with, when he was asking, what do we have? What does this community expect? And so, that's what was discussed. So, you guys need to decide what you want, and decide it and be done with it and support it and get over it. So if it's having three, it's having three. If you lose your department over it, because they all understand that it's a four-person department, that's what we have to deal with. But it needs to be decided, and people just need to be done with the issue.
You want a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a motion.
I move that we get a three-person police department with on-call people to fill in.
Same. I have a question on that, real quick, if I can.
Sure.
As far as when you say on-call people, are you talking just...
To fill the time.
What, what we have now, or do you want another part-time person, or just...
Deal with the people you have now.
So the understanding is a three-person department covering the streets, and on, as far as twenty-four hours goes, when they're not on the street, they're just on-call, correct?
I'm not the manager, but that would be my choice.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm asking for verification.
That's my motion.
Motion, second. No other discussion?
I think there's some legal issues with, with doing on-call, I guess maybe we need to go amend the agenda and go into executive session after they're in call, because what you guys may consider on-call and what you're saving by doing on-call may not be of actual savings, essentially.
We've been down this road before, and on-call is just pretty much next.
I'm not sure I've ever seen an on-call policy, and what that policy says may...
Chief, you guys work twelve-hour shifts, correct? Eight hours on, four hours on-call, roughly?
Roughly, that's what we've got right now.
That's how your schedule is based?
Yeah, basically, the first eight hours, well, you've got eight hours to cover the street, four hours to be on-call, while the officers on-call, they're paid, I believe it's two dollars an hour.
The standby pay.
The standby pay.
And then they get called out, you know, then obviously the on-call stops, and then time and a half starts.
And there's limitations to what they can do during that on-call period, correct?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, and...
Because we've revisited all this at one time when we actually paid, I think, all city personnel that are on-call, or maybe it was just police department.
It was just the police department at the time.
Do you still need...
Well, I mean, as long as the council understands that being on-call doesn't mean you're not paying somebody.
Right, right, they're still, they'll receive their, their time. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? What do we got here?
It looks like two and two.
Two and two, and you're abstaining?
Mm-hmm. There you go.
You have a vote, don't you?
Yeah. So, well, yeah, because he's abstaining.
I don't care, I can say no or abstain, whatever, you want to write me down.
Are you voting?
I'm not, I'm not making, I'm not making instant decisions, I'm gonna tell you guys that, both ways.
Do you want to just table it?
I vote no. So it's three, two?
I, I'm not gonna make a...
Three, two.
On the decision.
I think his abstention becomes no, I think you're only gonna vote if they're...
If he's not here.
If you're not here, right.
So it's still a three to two.
If he abstains, it's a no vote.
Yeah. Still three, two, motion doesn't carry.
I'm gonna vote yes or no, you say?
He did. He abstained, it's a no vote.
You know, on a previous police department, I was doing quite a bit of research, and three guys in the part-time is fine, until we get down to vacation, and like right now, we're in Bill's training, and that's when it puts people in issues where it's not good.
Yeah, because right now, like tonight for instance, I'm on for the next thirty-six hours by myself.
That's just what my previous research done that.
And I'd hate to, I mean, and I can bring at the next meeting how many hours I've actually worked since I started here, which I, I know I'm salaried, but it's getting old.
I'm, it did work out, three guys part-time will work out until those issues arise, and then you're screwing your own people.
The last time when we had this issue, you had one officer who was here who missed a funeral of, I believe it was his mother-in-law, that's unacceptable, in my book it is, and we can't be having that.
The problem is, is our past police department didn't have a very good working relationship with the sheriff's department, which they could have been gone if they would have worked right. I'm just stating, Jim works very well with the sheriff's department, if they need coverage, they've helped in the past.